Commission, we will get started with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have any staff announcements or agenda changes?
Good morning, Madam Chair. Brett Sampson, Planning Director. I have one announcement, staff announcement. The Planning Commission will probably start to see some more input from our Agriculture Advisory Committee. We're routing any projects to them that are either on or adjacent to resource production lands. And so you might start to see more comments in your staff packets that you review from the Ag Advisory Committee. So I think that's a great thing. It'll enhance communication, it'll enhance input, but I just wanted to make sure that you knew that that might be coming your way. So you'll see probably those comments from the Ag Advisory Committee. And that's my only announcement.
Okay. Ben, this is an opportunity for a general public comment on any land use item of interest to the public that is within the subject matter jurisdiction of the commission and not contained on the consent or regular agenda today. The law prohibits us from taking action unless it's an emergency item. You're ready.
John Marshall has made his decision. Let's see him enforce it. As you know, recently you passed a lighting ordinance. It was very thorough and very good. I really liked the public participation. A lot of the public participated. And you did quite a bit of work on it, and the work was excellent. Thank you very much for that. But code compliance, which is tasked with enforcing this, is not. They have, they're at an impasse of knowing how to enforce it. They don't quite understand what is grandfathered in and what is not, and where to move forward from this. So I think it's important that you do bring the building official in here and have a conversation with them regarding your lighting ordinance. Maybe some of you get my emails. You're probably most well-known by my dog Chewy. Actually, I'm not. I'm his human. He's not my dog. So you know the trials and tribulations that I go through in Kalabasas County. Well, a lot of those trials and tribulations involve neighbors. I don't talk to my neighbors. It's just, I mean, any of them. I have like 17, 18, 20 neighbors that order my property, smaller acreages. And I found out over the years, the best thing you can do is have them write you a letter. Because no matter what, they want something. They're going to change your words. They are going to try to gain from you having a desirable piece of property. My property's open property. Irrigated pasture. Because it's open, I get, during emergencies, I have helicopters down there for Cal Fire, for the National Guard. And when PG&E needs to come in and do emergency service, or they can't place a pole because it's too steep of a ravine, they get to use that as well. Even though I don't use it as a corporation yard, these are always last-minute deals. Sometimes I tell them, you have to give me a ride, too. So I get to go up in the helicopters as well. I enjoy that. But know that if somebody ever complains that I or somebody else in the county is using their property, I'm done residential for another purpose. These are emergency situations. These are allowed by law. And just tell them that as the cookie crumbles, so does he live. Since I have a minute and 47 seconds, some of you may have known about my health situation. Regardless, I will always participate, regardless of my cancer situation. They'll be knocked out. Don't worry about that. I'll do it from my bed. I've done it from, yesterday, day before yesterday, I made a public comment after I jumped out of a helicopter. Just got picked up that phone and called it into the Board of Supervisors. I am always available to the public. And just not my neighbors. A minute to go. Thank you, everybody, for being here. Thank you for taking this responsibility. Thank you to these wonderful people with smiles on the face. But let's get on with the show.
Thank you. Annette, is there anyone online who would like to speak? Is there anyone else in the audience who's not here for one of our agenda items? Nope. Okay, then we will close the public comments. And we have no consent agenda items today, so we will get started on our regular agenda. Item 1, 2023-0007, three zoning amendment for Shaman Norcal Properties, Inc. And we will let Ben take it from here.
All right. Good morning, Chair, Commission. Ben Diamond, Planner 2. Today I'll be presenting Zoning Amendment 2023-73 for Shaman Norcal Properties. This zoning amendment proposes to change the zoning of 626 Outback Way and Railroad Flat from RA to A1, which is residential agriculture, to general agriculture. Oh, it's not shown. What do I have to do to share?
Share.
Now you just got to find your thing. There you go.
Oh, wait, no, that's this one here. There we go.
There.
Yeah. Did I choose the wrong one?
Okay, let's just get back out of here, start over.
Yep. But now, if we do this, it didn't share it. Because that's not the right one.
Yeah, so you got to close that out.
So stop sharing that one, and now it's the infinity one again.
Ooh, that's cool.
In a galaxy far away.
This is the one that we would like to share. Oh, that's what I didn't do. All right.
Yay.
Good.
It says, is it expanded?
It's as expanded as I can make it.
That's perfect.
All right. Okay, so this project proposes to amend the zoning of 626 Outback Way, shown here, which is just east of Jeff Davis Reservoir, which is owned and operated by CPUD, and west of Railroad Flat in Independence. This is a 40-acre parcel that takes access off of Outback Way, which is a private road, which connects to Ridge Road, which is county-maintained road. The purpose of this zoning amendment is to have the ability to co-locate an additional cannabis cultivation permit on the parcel, where there's already an existing cannabis cultivation permit operating right now. The current land use designation of the parcel is working lands. This designation identifies properties that are suitable for ag and forestry practices, but on a smaller scale than those designated resource production. This category includes, but it's not limited to, lands with a combination of residential and home-based businesses, as well as lands with conservation easements and critical habitat. Common uses are small-scale agriculture, forestry, and other smaller resource production sort of things. Compatible zones with this land use designation are general forest timber production, general agriculture, ag preserve, rural residential, recreation, public service, and highway service. The surrounding general plan land use designations include working lands, resource production, and rural residential. And the surrounding land uses include a mix of residences, ranches, vacant land, and these are all parcels that are roughly 1 acre to 75 acres in size. The current zoning of the parcel, as I said, is residential agriculture. This zone's intended to have an equal emphasis on residential and agricultural uses, such as small-scale and personal-scale ranching and farming, and just general larger residential parcels. All of the current uses on the parcel are compatible with the RA zone, including the currently permitted cannabis cultivation site. However, the RA zone does not allow any co-location of cannabis permits, so the applicant is requesting the reclassification so that they have the ability to apply for an additional cannabis permit on the parcel. The zonings adjacent to the subject parcel are ag preserve, rural residential, and residential agriculture. The proposed zoning is general agriculture, A1, which is intended for general farming and ranching practices, and to identify such uses as the primary use for the land. Generally, the A1 zone allows for larger, more intense commercial uses than the RA zone. And as I said, the purpose for this is so that they can expand the current cannabis operation on the parcel. The proposed A1 zone is compatible with the working lands land use designation, and the subject parcel is not located in a subdivision or community plan area. The parcel is currently served by a private well and septic, actually, two private wells and two septics, and no residential development is proposed. Therefore, the project meets the density and land use intensity and water sewage standards of the designation. Additionally, as a result of the mitigation, monitoring, and reporting program of the project, it's consistent with general plan policies that are in place to avoid impacts to habitats, require new development to identify and mitigate impacts to wildlife habitats, mitigate and minimize impacts to biological resources and oak woodlands. Likewise, this project wouldn't create or intensify conflicts with resource production lands, or create an island effect, because the project does not propose to alter the boundaries of the parcel or the land use designation. If granted, the applicant proposes the following development on the parcel, for the additional cannabis cultivation permit: they propose a roughly 30,000-square-foot greenhouse just south of the existing residence, and once funding allows, they would like to also build a building for vegetation purposes just east of the existing greenhouse on the parcel. The current cannabis cultivation site on the parcel consists of a roughly 34,000-square-foot polycarbonate greenhouse, a roughly 4,000-square-foot processing and storage building, a 1,500-square-foot building and restroom, and a roughly 2,300-square-foot storage and utility building. The parcel is served by a roughly 1,000-foot-long gravelled driveway that has been improved to the standards of Public Resource Code 4290. The site is completely enclosed by a six-foot chain-link fence, and is currently served by two wells and two septics. If the project is granted, the two buildings, as well as some additional water storage tanks and some trenching for water line, are proposed as development, and the existing driveway will need to be rerouted around the new greenhouse. This is a 2024 aerial image of the site that shows its current state. As you can see, there's large greenhouse and a processing building are the two distinct factors there, and it is very thoroughly gravelled. This is a photo looking north from the driveway at the proposed location of the greenhouse. As you can see, the site is already disturbed quite a bit. However, there is some trees and vegetation that will have to be removed, as well as some grading for the construction of the new greenhouse. This is looking south from that same location, at the proposed location of the vegetation building. Again, already pretty developed, but there is likely some vegetation and trees that will need to be removed for the construction of that building, which is not proposed to be built immediately. If they were to have the opportunity, they just would like to build that once funding permits them to be able to do so. And this is a photo from the driveway, looking at the route for the proposed rerouting of the existing driveway, which, as you can see, just kind of bee lines out into the forest, and will also require significant grading, tree removal, and brush removal as well. The project was routed for 30 days to various county departments, public, and state agencies seeking comments. The only comments received during the review period were from the County Public Works Department, the Air Pollution Control District, and On-Site Wastewater. Public Works provided a memo that had no comment on the project. The Air Pollution Control District had no objection to the project, and included a reminder that if the applicant wishes to construct an emergency generator that is over 50 brake horsepower or larger, they would need an authority to construct a permit from them. And On-Site Wastewater had no objection so long as the applicant complete and adhere to the EMA review checklist, which is a checklist used by the Division of Cannabis Control here locally in the processing of the ministerial cannabis permits. This project is tearing off of the program EIR that was prepared for the county's cannabis program. So pursuant to Secret Guidelines Section 15168(c)(1), staff prepared an initial study to determine if there were any potential impacts beyond what the EIR looked at. That initial study was circulated for 30 days, and during that circulation period, comment letters were received from the Central Valley Water Board, East Bay Mud, Caltrans, the State Department of Cannabis Control, and two neighboring landowners. The neighbor to the west of the parcel objected to the project due to the potential increase in traffic, large trucks potentially damaging the road, and trash being left on the road by vehicles waiting to enter the site. And another neighbor that did not give their address, so it's unclear where they are, relative to the parcel, also objected to the co-location, claiming that the existing cultivation site has diminished their quality of life and property values due to noise, fumes, and being able to see the existing operation, and that an additional site would exacerbate those issues. The Board of Supervisors made findings of overriding consideration for increased traffic and objectionable odors, and the additional site is proposed to be contained entirely within a greenhouse, and must also meet a 150-foot property setback due to the co-location. The Caltrans comment letter said that there would be no impacts on a state right-of-way, which makes sense, as it's very far away from the nearest highway. The Central Valley Regional Water Quality Control Board provided a long regurgitation of their regulatory setting, but no specific comments to the project. And East Bay Mud requested annual, monthly, and peak water demand for the existing site and proposed cultivation site, as well as the number of wells proposed to be constructed for it. However, no new wells are proposed for this project, and the county does not track water usage for cultivation sites in the manner that they've requested. All cultivation sites that require one or more wells to operate are also required to do an annual well test for their first five years of permitting, as well as the seventh year, to demonstrate that their water needs are being met and that their wells aren't going dry. But we do not track it in the manner that the East Bay Municipal Utility District requested. The final comment letter came from the California Department of Cannabis Control. Their general comments suggested including acknowledgement of the department's regulations, and that the applicant will have to obtain a license or licenses from their department in order to operate the cultivation site. However, the applicant is already required to obtain or modify their local permit and/or state license to comply with the regulations under Chapter 17.18, and the state's licensing requirements are already contemplated by the county's program EIR, which this project is tearing off of. Therefore, the comments received do not change the conclusions of the initial study or mitigated negative declaration. Staff did not identify any factors under Section 15162 of the Secret Guidelines that would require a subsequent or supplemental EIR, and the site-specific potentially significant impacts can be fully mitigated through a mitigation, monitoring, and reporting program. In conclusion, the requested zoning is consistent with the county general plan, the zoning code, and is consistent with neighboring and adjacent land uses and zonings. The project is tiered off the program EIR for the cannabis program and addenda that were prepared for Chapter 17.18, and any additional site-specific impacts have been reduced to a level that is less than significant through the mitigated negative declaration prepared for this project. And as designed, the project promotes the public health, safety, and general welfare of the county. With that, I hand it back to you.
Does anybody have any questions for staff before we hear from the applicant?
Oh, I have one commendation. How you caught that there hadn't been any input for special status bat species is beyond me, but nice catch.
Thank you.
I am going to have some suggestions for the resolution, and I'd ask that they be made available now to the staff and to the public. Not that we're going to discuss these yet, but give you a little. Then the question I have really is, on page eight of the staff report, you mentioned the conformance with the oak woodlands measure, COS-4D, in the general plan. And is that, is the mitigation measure BR2, is that what?
Yeah, the measure that requires them to replace any large oak trees that they cut down.
Yeah, above five inches, I think it's. That's consistent. That does the coverage for the?
Yeah, in lieu of our oak woodlands ordinance, that's the mitigation.
The interim mitigation.
Okay.
Okay, is the applicant here, or representative of the applicant, like to come on up and speak?
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you very much for your time. So I would like to start by thanking you for taking the time for reviewing our application. Regarding the two concerns from the neighbors that we had, one of the neighbors that is right here, Mr. Jesus, always had a great relationship with him, and we have each other's private cell phone numbers. We've spoken numerous times. I wish you would reach out to us directly. We don't want somebody to suffer from our work, even though we take care of all the setbacks and further. So from any corner of our building, four or 500 feet to their residence, it's at least 160 to the property line. And if inside of the house, they feel a little bit more noise than they normally did before we came 2023, then I would have said that we would be happy to replace all your windows with soundproof windows to make you feel more comfortable. If outside there is something wrong, that you have a bad time seeing the biggest greenhouse, operational greenhouse building in the whole county, we can be creative, even though funds are not very great at the moment, but we would do everything in our power to either build a green wall, or something that would make you feel comfortable in your own home, because we don't want somebody to suffer from our work. Regarding the second neighbor, it's a little bit strange. She mentioned that it happened only once, two bottles of Coke, and I picked them up in the same day. And the fact that she didn't mention is that the whole Ridge Road that she's driving to her place, it's actually going through our property. So that whole driveway, as you mentioned, Ben, it's not, it's not a public road. It's a private road, which we own and pay taxes solely. And regarding the heavy trucks, after the work was done, we finished the work in May. We got our final permit in June. So between May and June, we had the lovely professionals from John Herzic. We paved part of the road, we graded, we put the rocks, we compacted everywhere where the road was needed, an additional love, and that's, we're maintaining that on a yearly basis. Even though we grade, I worked there with my father and my mother. We live there. It's not a business that we live in another state or something like that, and who knows who is living on the property or anything like that. We live with my family there. We work hard every single day. We make great product, but the margin and the business has been so low that for us to be able to keep doing what we're doing, we need just additional product to be able to maintain our business, basically. Because I'm not sure if any of you know this, but since the beginning of the year, we got robbed in March, beginning of March, and by that time, we were more than one cannabis farm being robbed in this county alone per week, per week. So even though the market is going through all sorts of trouble, the taxes are being raised again in a month and a half, and it's just something that we put everything for three years, seven days a week. The plants don't have day off, the plants don't have holidays or anything like that. We're there from 6:00, 7:00 in the morning until late at night. And as I said, regarding Mr. Jesus, I understand, we operate in the biggest greenhouse in the whole county. There is no bigger greenhouse than ours. And we made it state-of-the-art facility. And I don't want them to feel less home than what they felt before we came in the picture. And if inside the house there is a little more noise, then we're going to replace everything on our pocket. All the windows will make them soundproof. If you hate to see that beautiful greenhouse, it's beautiful to me. It might be ugly for somebody else, right? So we can, we're reasonable people. We're not here to try to hurt anybody's livelihood, or to have them enjoy less their property, which simply we asking the same thing. So we are here to work with, we had tens of inspections from grading to concrete to everything. So we have to do everything by the book, and I'm always available, phone, email, any questions or suggestions you may have. We're reasonable people. We're willing to sit down and find a solution to any problem that we have. That's basically what I have to say.
Anybody have any questions for the applicant?
Just one. I'm curious, what is the vegetation structure? What will the vegetation structure?
So this is a building where we would keep our genetic stock, and we would bring, so basically, we are coming from the wine world, all our generation in Eastern Europe, since we remember ourselves. But war in 91 kicked us out, basically, from our own house. So we got a house here. We made our home since 2008 in the States. So vegetation structure is a place, a greenhouse, where you keep your genetic stocks, your mother stock, from which you're taking clones. So you're taking clones, and then those clones, so we are basically having our own genetic, taking clones from our own, it's called mother stock, and then those will be propagated then into the bigger greenhouse, as soon as they are ready.
It's another greenhouse.
So yes, it's a smaller greenhouse. This one that we currently operate, it's 34,000 square feet. The vegetation one, it's about 10,000 square feet. That improves drastically the value of the property, and you can grow anything in those type of greenhouses. This is not something specifically only for cannabis.
How many additional plants do you plan on growing?
How many additional plants?
How many additional?
Plants? We're talking about 7, 8,000 plants per greenhouse.
Okay, and you're going to have a total of two greenhouses, right?
We'll have a total of?
The existing and a new one?
Yes.
Okay. And how many times a year do you? And how many times a year do you harvest?
Four times a year.
Four times, so you're looking at 28,000 plants a year. And do you know roughly how much water each plant consumes?
We are going through about 4,000, between 3,000 to 4,000 gallons of water a day.
Do you know how much it takes to bring one to full maturity?
Well, we can look at.
Each plant?
Each plant, they get about 60 milliliters of water.
Well, you're gonna have to break that down.
So it's about 0.29 gallons per hour, and they are getting about 15 minutes worth of that.
I did a little research, I was just curious, and.
But, so we have tanks, we have the biggest water suppression for the fire, and the first one to be approved with the new anti-vortex, the water suppression for the fire department. So we have 31,000 gallons of water only for the fire suppression. And then for the cultivation, we have two 3,000 gallon water tanks that we are using each of them about half. So we're talking about a day, we're not going above, about three, between 3,000 to 4,000 gallons of water.
I think my concern is more for the draw on the aquifer. That basically comes out to 31,500,000 gallons a year of water that you're gonna use, and it's drawing on the aquifer. You're probably fine up there, because that's where it starts, but then everybody down below you, it affects. And that's something that I always am concerned about when you're expanding something like this.
We dug a well last year, and the well that was there from the 90s probably, that well is about 100 feet, and we're talking about 12 gallons a minute. And the well that we dug with tankless help, it's about 100 gallons. So the well, it's less than 300 feet, and we are on the aquifer from the, the well, both our wells are on the low side, they are not on the high side. So on the, the property goes, it's 1,000 feet steep, and all of our wells are on the low side, we don't pump, anything's not pumped. So the well is on the aquifer, the lake is probably the one that is, the rivers that goes to the lake are probably helping our wells.
Again, it just affects the people below you, is all I'm talking about. And is there any neighbors that have had any issues, do we know, with their wells?
Not that, not that we were aware.
That never got brought to anybody's attention, I guess?
We didn't get any comments regarding wells on this project.
How would that determination be made otherwise if people didn't complain about the amount of water or the water pressure? What calculation occurs to make that determination?
Well, since they have to do annual well testing for the first five years, and then on the seventh year, if the well starts going down significantly over time, or just runs dry, they could potentially just be put out of business. We have had issues in the lower end of the county where cultivators' wells just went dry.
So I was particularly concerned about, as mentioned, the others who are drawing from the aquifer. How is it that we determine their impact? Is there a measurement of some sort that occurs?
Because it definitely does.
It would have to be based on complaints, because we can only have the cultivators' test, we can't force their neighbors to also test their wells and.
No, I'm certainly not suggesting that either. I'm just trying to figure out exactly how it is we make that determination.
31 million gallons is a lot of water.
No, I get that. How is it that it affects others that are drawing from the aquifer?
That's my concern. Doesn't seem like anybody else has that concern, but.
There was an extensive discussion of this during the development of the cannabis ordinance, and what was an appropriate level of testing, and whether the neighbors should be tested. And this is where they landed. This is what we have for an ordinance right now.
You mentioned how many milliliters?
Well, I was kind of, it takes 750 to 1,500 gallons per plant to full maturity. I did, I did research.
I'm not sure you got these numbers correct. I'm seeing 1 million a year, and you saw 30?
Well, you, if you do 28,000 plants a year, and it's 1,150 gallons per plant to maturity.
I can only speak to what we have in our greenhouse. Probably what you're referring to is the plant to maturity in the outdoor growing. An outdoor growing cultivation, it's a seven-month period or eight-month period of growing of the plant. And what we are doing, it's two months and a half. So that, your mathematic, your math is correct for the outdoor grow. The guys that are planting now and are basically gonna harvest in October or November. What we are doing in our situation, we grow the plant for three weeks, and then for two months in flowering stage. So what that gives to the plant is two and a half months of life cycle. So when I'm saying 28,000 plants is of the two and a half month cycle, instead of 7,000 plants, let's say for an outdoor cultivator, for eight months. So this, the math is a little bit different to our situation, because what you're referring to is the outdoor cultivation, which is totally different, totally different.
I didn't take that into consideration.
And bless of that.
That's why I was a little bit, I'm like, we don't even have, what, we don't even have.
Well, you're pretty well prepared.
Well, I'm just, I'm there, I'm there, so I know how much water is in those 3,000 gallon tanks there.
Okay.
Okay, any further questions? We might ask you back up.
Sure.
For now. So is there any member of the public who would like to speak to this item now? Come on up.
Good morning, I'm Starlin Patrick. I live up the road from Constantine, and first and foremost, he's a great neighbor. He is very conscientious, and he does, when I have concerns, he's addressed them. One of the concerns was the people that do come to harvest, they were littering and throwing a lot of garbage out while waiting for him to open the gate. And I told him, and he addressed it, and it's done. So I have no problem that he has marijuana and pot plants there. My thought and concern was that it was gonna be the whole 40 acres, and I thought, oh, Lord, no. But it's now that I know that the codes are for one acre per 20 acres, and the other one will consider it the code for agriculture, I have a greater understanding. We don't plan to move, however, if we do ever have to move, you know, there's gonna be some concern with his hazmat signs on his fence, and I would disclose that. As far as the harvesting and things, they do park on the side, very much off to the side, because our road is very narrow and it's gravel. My husband used to maintain it, but now he's older, not able to maintain it. So, but Constantine has had things fixed, and he has put actually pavement closer to the road. So I would be willing if he would actually pave it all the way down to his place, because when they do that construction, we've got potholes that are swimming pools, and, you know, they bring in the big trucks. And so that's, that's my concern too. The other thing is, our water comes from the Jeff Davis reservoir, so it does not affect us. We are right there in the peninsula, and so that doesn't affect us. My just big concern is our road. It does get big divots and things, and my car's already had so many tires replaced. But as far as him rezoning, and as long as, he's very conscientious, and we are on good terms. I just wanted to make sure that he will fix and maintain the road after the construction, because it gets really tore up. Other than that, that's, that's my only beef. Okay, thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name's Erin Nielsen, Tintania. I'm speaking on behalf of my family, which owns an adjacent property to this property that's applying for a permit.
Hang on a minute, could we maybe get the aerial view or something up so people can show us what they're talking about? Or it looks like you might have something to show us.
Thank you. We are here to speak in opposition to this amendment. We appreciate Constantine and his family, and he's a great person. But his business has already impacted heavily our property's value and my parents' quality of life on this property from the construction that he has right now with the 10 different greenhouses that we see from our house. His property is directly adjacent to ours, and it actually, the construction actually butts directly on our property. And we monitor the decibels from my parents' house, over 70 decibels when he has his generators Usually that's an unsafe noise and creates hearing loss, according to most studies. Property's also increasingly visible to our property. And as you can see, taken from my parents' house, this is almost, this is definitely an eyesore. This is not what my parents and us moved into this area for. Our property is already on its third well, not from his growth, grow facility, but from other, from other illegal growing facilities that used to happen in the area. Let me say that again, our third well. Sharing the aquifer with a grow, a large growing facility does impact, us commissioners have said here, the private wells that all the residents rely on. And it's obviously not monitored, it's based on complaints. So you wouldn't know unless I come here to tell you we have problems with our wells, our third well so far. So aside from the noise level, the eyesore, the constant, very objectionable orders all the time, we also have light pollution a lot of the time. And obviously, none of this is reflected on your EIR or your SEACW report, but this is definitely very different from the property we moved into. Disclosures and property values for us are definitely a big concern. Lastly, this property is not, this property would be incompatible with the other zoning around this property. It would be the only one in the entire area that would have general agriculture designation. All the other properties are RR20 and AP, which are agricultural preserves. So this would be very different from what we already have. Again, we appreciate your time, and I have a letter from my parents to enter into the record.
Could you point on the map or describe to us where your home is?
Yes, it's the property on the right corner of the applicant, below, below, right below, the right corner.
Thank you.
So this is, that's exactly right. That's his house, and this is what we see.
It looks as if you're slightly uphill from that, is that right?
Excuse me?
It looked, from that picture, that you're slightly uphill for where their greenhouse is, but do you know the relative positions of your wells?
Just, just about the same level.
Okay.
And I believe you said that the wells went bad prior to them starting there?
Correct, because there were other growing facilities.
Gotcha.
That were apparently illegal and shut down. But it is proved the growing facilities do affect the reservoir, because we share that same reservoir.
Do you draw?
There's also another well that we draw on the same level.
If somebody's speaking, they may become the podium.
Excuse me, one other question?
I'm sorry, I'm not sure.
Will you say something?
You'll have an opportunity when everybody else has had a chance to speak.
Thank you. You just mentioned the reservoir. You draw your own water from your wells or from the reservoir?
No, I'm sorry, I meant from the aquifer. I meant to say the aquifer, the same aquifer.
Let me ask, you've replaced, you've had to do three wells?
Yes, three wells on our property, we are on our third one.
And since the start of their business, when did those wells have to be done, before or after?
As I said, these were dried up by previous growing facilities that were shut down by the county in prior, in years prior to his operation.
So.
We haven't had enough, obviously enough time to, and we haven't monitored enough our, our existing well.
So to be clear, you've not dug another well since their business?
We have not yet.
Okay.
So it looks like you covered all of the information in here, do you want me to read this into?
No, we just wanted to enter it into record. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak?
I have no opinion on this. I'm not gonna say I support it or don't support it, because everybody loves me, and I want it to be that way. One thing that's, we haven't worked on as a county, is an update to the environmental impact report that's inadequate at this time. It doesn't take into consideration air quality at the 2,500 foot to 3,500 foot level, where we, every year, we face an inversion layer, where it's still dense air, air pollution from the, from the valley that settles and chokes us. When the marijuana wars were going on, we had, you know, we had a tremendous number, tremendous impact in Calaveras County at that elevation between those numbers. And the adding the odors and the pollutants, pollen, et cetera, into the air was, was very detrimental to the community. People complained about it en masse, and, you know, your environmental impact report is not specific to our county. When this was going on, we basically just took other people's information and used it. I did make a recommendation at that time, because we were in a hurry, we wanted to get that marijuana money. We didn't take that into consideration. It'd be very advantageous to everybody if we started looking at air scrubbers on greenhouses, finding, finding ways to mitigate the situation the best we can. I realize this project is pretty far along, but, but that's one thing you might take in, I want everybody to listen and take into consideration for other, for the future. You know, when it comes to water, best thing you can do is get them on, and perhaps the applicant can help with the finances regarding this, is get them on CCWD, or not, on the Jeff Davis system over here. One day I'll tell you folks who Jeff Davis was, native American. Anyway, so, you know, it might cost applicant some money, and he's putting away some money into this already, but if you could help the neighbors with the water situation. In West Point, I have an artesian, I have ponds, and a reservoir, but I have CCWD water. Because coming from a farm family, I know that the best thing you could do is, is be on the district, the district system, we're not gonna worry about your drought or dry here. With that, thank Mr. Latish for his, for his recommendations. You know, Mr. Latish is a good guy. People don't tell him, say that, but he is. Anyway.
Is there anybody else who'd like to speak? Come on.
My name is Joanne Ebert, I'm a Calaveras County resident. For about six years ago, we moved from the Bay Area. This is my first time speaking, so apologize. I'm not specifically addressing this request, but I just want to publicly say that I am against cannabis grow. This is a drug, and it brings bad elements to our community. And I can personally speak about this way back in the day. And I can personally speak about this way back in the day when my brother, he had a medical marijuana card to grow marijuana, and he grew some plants in his backyard. And his two sons got into the drugs, and one is in prison for murder, one is a drug addict, and my brother is dead now because of this. So this is a drug, and it's just the tip of what can happen to people that get addicted to this drug. I also, I was working in the Bay Area, and we moved up here, I was still working in the Bay Area, and I would stay at my daughter's house, and it was near a marijuana grow. And that smell was horrendous. We couldn't open our windows.
So, I'm sorry, I have to interrupt you. The opportunity to speak generally is at the beginning of the day when we open the meeting.
Okay.
So if something is not on the agenda, you have an opportunity to speak then, but once something is on the agenda, then the comments need to be targeted to the issues for that particular agenda item.
Okay, well then, I'm against this-
Okay.
...this additional cannabis grow. Because, and I also, also have a water concern. You know, we, it takes a lot of water for these plants, and I think it could be used in better, better resources. So thank you for your time.
I have a question. Have you had to dig another well?
She's not-
No, actually, believe it or not, even though we're that in the country, we have city water.
Thank you.
Not me, but.
Oh.
Okay, is there anyone else? All right, then we are going to close the public comment portion, unless there's somebody online. Annette, can you take a quick look? No, okay. We'll close the public comment portion of the, this item, and give the staff an opportunity to respond to whatever they heard or clarify for us or add any information.
Just with regards to wells, given the geology in our county, it's really, really difficult to say the impact that one neighbor's well has on another. Sometimes, even if they're right next to each other, they're drying off of different aquifers. So that is a difficult situation in our county, and we've mitigated it best we can.
Any questions?
What, I always think of an aquifer as something that is a large source of water. When you say different aquifers, are you saying-
A lot of ours are in fractured shale, so they're not all connected.
Right.
There can be small ones, there can be very big ones. Down in the west end, there's some big ones that touch us, but it's hard to say which is which sometimes.
So, yeah, when you say aquifer, you're saying a water source from underground?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so.
The applicant was-
Excuse me?
The applicant was-
Oh, yes, we'll give him a chance to rebut that. So would the applicant come back up and answer any, you can respond to anything that you heard from the public?
So as I mentioned, our lot, our property is, is in a steep hill. We don't have a flat land. So as you can see in one of the pictures where, where Mr. Ben was showing the future greenhouse, the small greenhouse, the other, yeah, this one. So you can see the amount that we had to cut here to make a flat. And my neighbor is further up north. So we also had a well, when we purchased the property, on the same more or less level as the neighbor. And that well went dry, and that's why we went deep, about eight hundred feet, probably at least a hundred and fifty feet below the area of our houses. So if Ms. Starlin is not having any issues with the water, because she's on the other water, the wells, both wells that we have is all the way lower than the pad of Mr. Jesus here. And regarding the new license, this is not a new license. We are not requiring, we are not requesting for the county to add an additional license for us. This is a license that was borrowed or purchased from another right to apply from another location into ours. This is not something that we are trying to request new licenses to be applied for the county. This is simply a license that was not being used as many, many others.
I just have a question for you.
Please.
So with your forty acres, you could do a lot split and by right have that second-
Yes.
-cannabis grow. I assume you're doing this so that you can keep everything consolidated and only impact a small portion of the property?
Yes, so we don't have to build another road and do a lot of, I mean, we've been at it for over a year. We had all sorts of inspections and SEQA guys to check for the bats and to check for owls and all the other stuff. And for us to, to damage more of our property and build an additional road and do fencing and all the other stuff, this seemed to be an easier, and if I'm not mistaken, there is another A1 in the vicinity to us.
They're barely showing up there at the top.
Just at the very top of the screen there, yeah.
Yeah.
Do you have filters on the exhaust for your greenhouse?
We only keep one exhaust during the night out of twenty, and if filter is, the good, we have about one thousand feet of driveway to our property, and the greenhouse is closer to the house, so it's at least six hundred, seven hundred feet from our property line. But if this would make everybody's life easier, and we would not be opposed to putting filters on the, on the, on the exhaust.
And it definitely, they do see it from their property, but you did indicate that you'd put up vegetation or whatever to block the view?
If I would know that this is, this is their concerns, we would come up with something. We are reasonable people, we're not trying to hurt anybody's livelihood. But again, even though we have each other's cell phone numbers and we spoke multiple times, and my wife is great friends with his wife, we share vegetables all summer long from our garden, we are reasonable people. If you'd come to us and say, hey, let's do something about this issue that we have, we would have addressed it long, long before.
Okay, one more thing, the generator, is that inside of a house?
The generator is an emergency generator, and it's an outside. It's outside the house, but it's an emergency-
The generator's not allowed to be in an enclosed structure.
It's an emergency generator.
You can sit around them, but you can't enclose them.
In the vein of power, power law-
The hospital ones can, they're a whole different-
Can you guess in the last year how many times the generator has been used?
Several times. The most important-
So you don't, is the generator only when the power is out?
Yes, and, and, and right now, we are doing a larger project for the solar. So we have a solar project that it's been extended in four different phases. So now, when we shut down some, so we can check the, the solar panels, so we're doing a lot of testing now, it's a little more often, but it's not, the generator's not working twenty-four seven.
How, how many days a month would you say that it's on?
As I said, whenever we have the sun, we want to test it, and then whenever we have a rain, we want to test it also. So we shut down all the electricity from the PG&E that comes, so that's, we are basically working to, to fix the solar situation, because PG&E only allows us one phase, and for us to bring three phases, they said an exorbitant amount of money and time, three to five years. So we're trying to be creative and bring in solar panels, so all, both roofs have solar panels, and we're gonna put solar, ground mount solar panels also, so it will cover basically the needs that we have for-
My understanding is that-
Yes.
...normal operation, the generators will go on-
Yes.
...only when the power-
One hundred percent.
...from PG&E goes off.
One hundred percent.
Right now, and that's two or three times a year or something?
Yeah, sometimes it's two, two times a week.
But it sounds like right now, you're, you're actually experimenting with trying to run entirely off your solar?
Yes, ma'am.
So I believe a condition of your cannabis permit is that, that generators only run when power is not available, and that would include PG&E power. So that might be something that you're gonna need to look at.
We will, we will address that immediately. But as I said, it's only, we only testing the solar, so for us to be able to test the solar power and the kilowatts and all the other stuff, we have to shut down one of the power. So, but again, we will, we will definitely take that into consideration moving forward.
It won't be the long-term solution?
No, yes, absolutely, absolutely.
So I have a question. The photograph that was presented by Mr. Quintanilla shows some vegetation between their property and yours.
Mm-hmm.
And you've indicated a willingness to try to mitigate the view?
Yeah, what I, what I-
So let me just ask this. Is it likely you might be willing to plant some vegetation to create a barrier, so to speak?
That's what I have, I had in mind when I first read their letters. So I said, if, if it's too much noise inside the house, we're willing to give to A and install anti-sound, yeah, I believe, soundproof windows. And if the outside is what bothers your eyesight, then we can, it was just an idea, again, this, of doing some sort of either trees or maybe some smaller, I don't know how they call it, bushes or something like that to cover it, or even a wall. Again, those are ideas, and we are open to ideas, we're reasonable people, we're not.
And actually, the proposed expansion is on the opposite side, so.
It's closer to our house and further from that.
Thank you. Any more questions?
Good.
Okay. So who would like to think out loud?
Well, I'm, I'm in, I'm in favor of approving the request. I do understand the Quintanilla's concerns. I know that you buy a property where you buy it so that you can enjoy the rural setting, only to have a, an operation open its doors next door is, is troublesome, but that's the nature of where we live and how we do business and, and all that's involved. So reluctantly, I am in support of the measure to approve the item.
I too am in favor with, with some of the changes of the resolution that I'm going to be suggesting. But I think one thing that really has to be understood by the neighbors is that when the ordinance was approved by the Board of Supervisors, they recognized, the Board of Supervisors recognized that there were significant impacts that were not going to be mitigated. The odors, long-term increase in traffic, degradation or removal of sensitive national, natural communities, that the Board of Supervisors decided that, yes, we recognize there was our significant impact, but that, that there are overriding considerations that the county applied in, in determining that in, even though those were significant effects, the county would go ahead with, with the cannabis program. So if I were a neighbor, perhaps the, the fact that this is all in greenhouses, that probably makes a big difference with the odor. But I, I know, living in a rural, rural part of a rural county, that when it's, when it's time to harvest the crops, the odor can be quite significant. It's just that that is not something that we can consider as a, as a factor in this, because the Board of Supervisors has decided that, that it will accept the odor problems in order to get the benefits of the cannabis industry in the county.
The money, yeah, just the money. I will tell you that I live around, there's grows all around me, and they're, they're not, like this gentleman here, I can tell you, having it in a greenhouse is definitely better than what we're subjected to in our area. And it seems like he's a willing participant in mitigating the problems that you're having. So you're lucky, because a lot of them aren't. So I know it doesn't feel lucky, but at least he's willing to try and help in some ways. I'm inclined to, you know, approve it as well.
So I, I'm also inclined to approve it.
It's the law.
And because I think the alternative is to, for him to go ahead and have a second grow by doing a lot split, and I think that this is far preferable to consolidate all of his operations in a smaller area, impact fewer people, or have it on a separate parcel somewhere else in the county. And that I think that, from all we've heard, he is a responsible grower, trying to do the right thing and following the process here, and installing solar, which should in the long term reduce the impact on the environment and on the amount of time that the generators do need to run. So I, I think there are, Commissioner Ladish had a couple suggestions on the resolution that we'll discuss. I'll let you guys make your comments first before I make mine. Have any, any comments?
We haven't been presented with the resolution, so I-
Well, we have the resolution.
Yeah, okay. There's a couple of things in addition to this, my proposals that are on the paper here. I wasn't clear, I think I know, on the one, two, three, fourth whereas paragraph, it says, whereas the project is a later discretionary approval requested. Does that mean that it's, it's later than the original EIR or what?
Yeah, it's subsequent to the EIR, but not fully within the scope of it.
And so getting to my list, I, we do need to recognize that we're now at March twenty-seventh and December twelfth. There is not in, in the whereas paragraph, last whereas paragraph doesn't recognize that there was public input. I think we need to have that put in, now that we've heard public input. Be nice for resolutions to have page numbers. I'm finding my way, okay? Then my, my second suggestion on this piece of paper is that, as it currently reads, the first finding would say that there's no substantial evidence that it will have a substantial effect on the environment. I think that there can be a substantial evidence as to noise and et cetera, excuse me, as to odor, but I think we need to recognize that the, it would not substantially worsen the three cannabis-related significant impacts. Because I wouldn't be prepared to say it'll have no significant impact, because it could as to these three areas. So that's why I've re, suggested a rewriting of that finding number one.
Commissioner Ladish, on that, I think the idea was the project as design will not have a substantial new effect on the environment. So maybe just inserting the word new instead of striking the entire-
Well, I think, I think what I've, the way I've done it, I take care of the new at the, at the, in the end, saying nor would the proposed mitigation measures with the project have additional site-specific significant effects on the environment.
Right. I don't think it does any harm.
Excuse me?
I don't think it does any harm.
Okay, good.
So I, I think just in the interest of time, I am fine with Commissioner Ladish's proposed modifications to the resolution up to the final, but excluding the final paragraph. Does everybody agree with those? And then we don't need to have a big discussion on it.
Yeah.
If we're all good with them, they're, they're- If we're all good with them, they're, they're clerical in nature. Okay.
So everything but the last paragraph?
Yeah.
Okay.
And then I'm just gonna say I object to the final paragraph. I think it has no place in this resolution.
The, the whole paragraph?
The whole paragraph.
So, I mean, do away with finding five?
Everything from given the above findings down the final paragraph of your proposed. This is the.
I am, I am confused.
You were just.
Do you have, do you think that as proposed, it's just fine?
Yes, I'm fine with it as proposed.
And you don't think my language is needed? Is that right?
That, that's exactly.
Okay. I was, I was put in there just to assuage the concerns that the neighbors would have that, that their concerns were not being heard. That was the only purpose of that. So it does not, I.
Doesn't add to the resolution.
I concur with the chair.
Okay.
See, that was short and sweet.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so.
Just to clarify, is that removing all of finding five or just not making the changes to that?
Removing his, his proposed language.
Don't ever put it in.
Yeah, just don't put it in in the first place.
So I think we're ready for a recommendation.
Staff recommends that the planning commission take the following actions. Adopt Planning Commission Resolution 2025 number five, as amended, recommending that the Board of Supervisors adopt the subsequent mitigated negative declaration and the mitigation monitoring and reporting program, and approve the zoning amendment of APN 014010041 from RA 20, Presidential Agriculture, 20 acre minimum, to A1, General Agriculture.
So move.
I second.
A motion and a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Nine passes four, one.
Four, zero.
Four, zero, one. I can, I never get it in the right order. Yes, you're correct. Thank you. And is this action?
It's not final, it has to go to the Board of Supervisors, the recommendation to the Board, and that will, the Board's decision will be final.
Great, so this is item two, 2025-011, Appeal of Administrative Use Permit, AUP 2024-082 for Noah and Amber Glanville. There's going to be continuation in action, but I'm recusing myself from this item, so I'm gonna be leaving the room.
I shall go ahead and assume chairmanship. So, good, let's start then. Staff report whenever you're ready.
I'll, I'll be taking this one. On this item, on 2025-011, Appeal of an Administrative Use Permit, AUP 2024-082 for Noah and Amber Glanville, for that item, that appellant, Ralph Niven, has requested continuance. They requested continuance because of the three commissioners, that's a choice to either party, either the appellant or the applicant in this case, and in this case, the appellant requested to continue the item to the April 10th meeting. And so they, they've availed themselves of that right, too. They probably wanted more commissioners present or something to that effect.
What, do we need to motion to that effect or we just table it?
I would continue it to a date certain so that it doesn't need to be re-noticed. And because if it's continued on the record, it doesn't, then the public is aware that it won't be taking place at the next hearing.
We would like to continue to April 10th.
Let's do so then, to April 10th unless.
Well, you need a motion, right?
Yeah.
In case we do, I'd move, I'd move that we continue it to the date certain of April 10th.
I'm second.
And all those in favor? Aye. Aye. Opposed with one abstention and another absent? Okay, very well.
Could somebody look out in the lobby and bring the chair back in?
I'll get it.
All right, so we are on to item three, 2024-013, Conditional Use Permit for Jeremy and Lynette Covey-Smith, the DBA Four Horse Ranch, an item continued from our 313, 2025 hearing.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Yes. Do you want the previous PowerPoint presentation to look at any of the maps or?
As of right now, I don't have any.
Okay, I will just, I will leave it handy here. So this is the continuation from our hearing on the 13th for Conditional Use Permit, 2024-013, for Jeremy and Lynette Covey-Smith, for Four Horse Ranch. You have been given an addendum to the staff report that includes an amended draft Planning Commission Resolution, which Commissioner Ladish has many of the recommendations that you gave us previously, in addition to the things that we discussed during the hearing. It also has four attachments to it. It has the site plan in Exhibit A, the mitigated monitoring, mitigation monitoring and reporting program in Exhibit B, the mitigated negative declaration, which includes the project description that we wanted to have attached to the resolution, as well as a, as well as a waste management plan that we have been working on with Lisa Medina, with Environmental Management. And included in that are two attachments that are the best management practices that we used in order to put together that waste management plan.
I have some questions on the final waste management plan.
Yes.
Now, you just mentioned that there are attachments to it. We have, the, the final waste management plan, the Exhibit D is the manure management plan. Now, it's followed by an attachment two and an attachment three, and I thought that was, those were attachments to the staff report. Is that right?
I, I have that same question. Are we proposing to include those as part of the requirements, or are they just there for our reference?
I, I think they're just there for your reference. The final waste management plan would be the, the implementation of the condition of approval and mitigation measure.
And I take it it was worked out between you and Environmental Services that, I mean, originally it was contemplated that, that the final plan would be issued by Environmental Services, and this is not coming from you?
No, I, it's really a collaboration. Environmental Management doesn't have, I believe, any, any direct authority to require it, and that's why we're back with you with the particulars so that you can condition it if you so wish. It was a, to be honest with you, it was myself drafting it, taking out the pertinent items from those two-sided literature sources that seemed to be kind of the forefront of the industry standard for waste management plans. But that's why I incorporated, they incorporated them by reference and have them there in case things want to be added or, or subtracted. I did coordinate with Lisa Medina, she provided some input into the plan and thought that it was adequate.
Great. One question I have on that plan, it, under collection, it says stalls and paddocks should be kept clean and dry, and I, I don't know how you keep a paddock dry.
Yeah, well, it, it's, it's more of scraping it and making sure that the manure doesn't mix constantly with, you know, if it's a rain event, that kind of thing, so scraping it dry.
But you can't.
No, you can't, it'll, it'll get wet again. But then, then there's no provision that the, that the paddocks be covered. The waste, the, the collection areas need to be covered to eliminate runoff.
Perhaps you could, just so there isn't controversy down the road where somebody claims they're not keeping their paddocks dry, and here it is right here. Can you do something other than the use of the term dry? Then I think to, to avoid any, any possible problems with church ministers, I think maybe under utilization and disposal, land application, that pasture areas may be.
That made it through the spell check, yeah.
So we're, we're great on spells here.
My tacos need to be.
I was thinking a little prayer might be said for.
But then the, the manure may be spread in pasture areas up to one inch in depth. Then under health, there is a sentence under parasite control, remove manure from pastures regularly. It seems to be an inconsistency there.
I think it's the, what can be, it's the compost or the.
Right.
Result of the processed manure can be spread in the pasture up to one inch deep.
Right, so I could maybe identify compost.
Yeah, and I don't know if it's, if it, if that's the right term or not, because I'm not enough of an expert on it. Yeah, come on.
Can I just, can I just interject real fast here? I think, I think the confusion is that a manure pile, or not a manure, but when you're in a pasture, so when you have a pasture, then you have multiple horses in that pasture. And what horses love to do is congregate. And when they congregate, sometimes they like to defecate all together. So you might have an area that gets kind of piled up, and what I understood that to mean is don't let it get piled. They should be cleaned regularly, which we do, and then they shouldn't be more than an inch. So when you come in to investigate, to do an exam, whatever, you would say, oh, that's three inches deep, that's clearly more than a day or a week, it's, you know, depending on which area. So that's the way that's to be understood. It's, they often come together, so.
But it, it, this would be straight manure, not manure that had been.
If it's in a pasture, it's more likely to be straight manure because it would be where the horses are pooping, and then that would be an inch, because they do piles, right? So, like, so.
This is talking about something that has been intentionally.
Yes, then there's the composting, and composting can be spread, but you wouldn't necessarily spread that, sometimes they do, sometimes they put it in the pastures, but to build up the property because they, they erode the land a little bit, so we'll spread it, let the rain hit it, and, and after it's composted, and harden it down, and then let the horses be on it. But most of the time, excuse me, composted dirt is used in other areas that are not congregated by the horses. So it would be an inch, and I think the publication actually said two inches in the actual publication, but then you guys said one inch and I didn't, yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Well, I'm, I'm still confused, and as, as stated, there seems to be an inconsistency here.
Well, I mean, it is, it is stating that manure may be spread in pasture areas up to one inch, so it's, it is exactly that. It will only be in a pasture area, not in the paddock or the stalls, but in it, it is also means manure, and I think it's, it goes to what the applicant is saying, is that it's not to, it's to, you know, stop in a pasture area from there being a buildup of manure.
What I was envisioning was the entire pasture being covered in one inch of manure.
Oh, no, no.
And that's.
But, but in this, you, you could go up to that.
Yeah.
Yes.
Fertilizing.
Right. It's, it's to, you know, preclude there being mounding, preclude that starting to build up. It's to state that pasture areas need to be maintenance as well. In this case, there really isn't, it's, it's paddocks and stalls, but this was kind of a catch-all for possible future improvements of that site.
But, okay, then, then how do we?
So if, if we're talking about the manure, it says that it can be broken up and spread more evenly through the pasture area, and then it has another section that talks about after processing that manure and it becoming akin to compost, then it can also be spread in order, like fertilizer.
Correct.
So there are two different things, and I'm not sure that we.
Should we just add in manure slash compost?
No, because I think one is, is just evenly distributing the manure that is naturally falling in the pasture.
Right.
So that it doesn't end up in one big pile, and the other is actually treating that pasture area to improve production of grass by using the.
I, I want to, I want to be clear, there was a, there was, there is a further condition at the end of the waste management plan, so we are talking about compost because there is a, a caveat down here that says do not spread un-composted manure.
Right.
So there's no spreading of, so, you know, it's, it's all compost.
But this does say that you can evenly distribute the manure in the pasture, doesn't have any depth, it's more just not letting it stack up.
But we still have this provision, remove manure from pastures regularly.
Yeah, and I'm not sure.
So it'd be removed.
If you'd remove it from a paddock and a stall, but not daily, but not necessarily from a pasture.
Would you like that deleted?
Well, I think, or refer to paddocks and turnout areas rather than pastures. Pastures are usually a larger area, you'd be, that'd be quite the project.
Well, the first, first sentence under parasite control is remove manure from areas where animals are confined, stalls, paddocks, within 24 hours to prevent larval development.
Right, so that part's good.
I guess, I, I understand, what you're saying is making a lot of sense, that take care of the piles.
Yeah, they congregate, clean it up.
But, but I, I do, the way it's worded in here is that you can have the entire pasture covered in manure up to one inch in depth, and that, that's a problem.
That's what I think, it's meant for.
The pastor in it really was meant to talk about compost.
Mm-hmm.
That would be fine.
I, I agree.
Talking about what you can do with the resulting material.
No, I agree.
There was a section in one of the publications that specifically speaks to manure slurry, and it says that you can spread that, so in, if you go to a dairy, right, they have a lot of manure and it's manure slurry, and they put it in a, basically a chip spreader, but a machine, and they shoot it across greenland, and that is what the publication was referring to. I think somehow in collaboration, it ended up in some of the language here. It would never actually be like that.
Never actually have.
In, in my, yeah. I'm not shooting slurry.
I also was concerned that I didn't see anything about allowing them to sell or give away compost when it talks about utilization and disposal, it talks about taking it to a disposal site, but really, once it's composted, you could be giving it to your neighbors or the community.
Correct.
Or using it on your own.
Yeah, or selling it.
Yeah, or selling it.
Right, we could add a, we could add a bullet point there that, that compost may be sold or given away from the site.
So my only concern with that would be, are we creating a situation where we're saying, oh yeah, sure, it's fine to have a whole lot of traffic to the site? So just how we could balance those, but it seems like they're going to create a lot more compost than they need on their property. So.
So how do we want to work?
Yeah, how do, how would we?
I, I would, I mean, I think it says, what did it say?
You could say that it can be delivered off-site instead of having the traffic.
If you look at the amount of manure created and the amounts that, according to the publications, it's, 40 horses does not create more than we can use. That being said, I would love the opportunity to sell or give away. We do that now, or did that now, but...
Yeah, I think...
Yeah.
Just the provision that it may be...
Having a provision would be awesome.
Maybe delivered off-site.
Which I think is covered somewhere in here. Was it in the resolution?
I thought we did. I was just blinking on it.
I think it is. It's just not in the manure management.
That could be part of their plan.
Yeah.
Up to them.
So what are, what's your proposal as far as under land application? What would that be?
I think we, I think, I like going with just the, instead of manure, compost may be spread in pasture areas up to one inch in depth.
Doesn't sound like that's exactly what they do anyway, so, but if they chose to do it, there's an option.
But more like when somebody inspects, and there's a small pile from that day.
I have a couple other, just under collection, the third bullet, says usable bedding should be used in stalls after daily cleaning of manure, but I think what they're talking about is usable bedding should be retained in the stalls after daily cleaning, because it's that you're supposed to separate it and try to reuse some of the straw bedding, or whatever kind of bedding you're spending money on.
I'm sorry, where are you?
This third bullet right here under collection.
Okay.
And then I, my other comments all really have to do with, should we be mentioning other things like wells, swales, ditches for clearances? So we talk about that it has to be 100 feet from the property line, but we also need to retain any runoff on the, this property, rather, on the neighbors, and we also would need to make sure that if we're storing a big pile of it, that it's away from any of these other items that could concentrate water runoff.
There were some options in the literature, but I don't think there's any identified drainages on this site, or wetland features, or areas that would be impacted, so, you know, we could put in a caveat that says that, you know, shall be 100 feet from these areas, but I think they're 100 feet or more just by the way the site is laid out.
Right.
They already are.
So it's just retaining any of that runoff on the property, not allowing it to concentrate on, get onto another piece of property.
It doesn't, it doesn't runoff onto another piece of...
We would get, I think we're getting into more engineering level, you know...
It's state law. You can't run, you can't concentrate any runoff onto another piece of property, and, but specifically, if you're building something around to contain this, you are, by definition, collecting some of that moisture around it. So they just need to retain it on their own property, or dissipate it appropriately as clean water onto the neighboring property. And they talked about that in some of these...
Okay, runoff prevention.
I mean, I'm not talking about any major engineering project.
We do, we do state of constructing burms or barriers to contain runoff from reaching waterways. We could add a set...
And adjacent properties.
Yeah, we could say, "And adjacent properties." Okay.
I mean, this seems like a very, good condensed version of trying to pick out the most important.
We were trying to reach a happy medium that wouldn't be overly technical, overly burdensome, or, and also for, you know, we need to be able, somebody to walk up on the site and visually, you know, see what's going on.
So, this is just a question about how this would actually work, is that we provide this, this is the criteria, but the applicant, whoever it is, not, because this could apply to someone else in the future, right? Would then provide a man, a plan that addresses all these items, and planning would check off that their plan addresses all the items on here.
In a future project, I think we would, we would try to front, knowing what we know now, try to front-load it, so the draft plan would be drafted by the applicant upfront, would be proposed for review and approval by planning and environmental management, and, you know, combat's feedback, and then we would, what would come to a planning commission would be, you know, the final draft plan, so to speak, in this type of a use.
But in this case, do they come back with, they have a plan started, so they had a start on that. Do they just update it to make sure that it addresses each of these items and bring it back to you?
This would be the final Waste Management Plan, and this would be what would be enforced as the mitigation measure.
So do you feel like...
I feel it's fine.
All of your normal operations are addressed in here, and that we're not leaving...
My only condition is, like you mentioned, how do you keep them dry? Like after a rain? Because it's not covered. I have a few little shelters, but even, like, they get, you know, things get wet. So that would be the only issue, is the keeping it dry. I have no problem with everything else. We have grassland burms, we've got, we don't drain into other properties, no matter what anybody else says. It has to run uphill, as observed by Madeline. When she came out to visit, and Cody, when he came out to visit, it would have to run uphill in order to fill the properties that have said that it runs into theirs, or it would have to go through five acres of heavy dense grass to get to the last one that was saying. We, everything goes through, it's filtered, it's prohibited, there's no manure, like, it becomes clean water by the time it's anywhere. Everything's, everything fits this, this plan.
So where are we now, as far as keeping the paddocks dry? What...
I think that's what we're talking about.
I know, but I didn't know if she'd made any...
Right now, we've ratcheted back to say stalls and paddocks should be kept clean, should be kept clean. So we got rid of dry, since they're not covered.
The stalls should be kept dry.
Yeah.
Well, they're not technically, I don't technically have stalls. That's the catch.
Oh, you have.
So if I do build a stall, like, because the stall wouldn't be permitted, so I could put it, I don't want you to remove it, because if I did do a stall, it would be dry.
Right.
And I can always put down stall mats. We have one space where a horse is, well, two spaces, where a horse is injured, and in both spaces, they are kept dry.
Could we just add something like, you know, uncovered paddocks shall be well-drained, just so that they...
There you go, yeah.
So they don't stand in water for any length of time.
So can we say stalls should be kept clean and dry? Can we say that? And then a second sentence that says paddocks...
Kept clean and well-drained.
Yeah.
I think if you just struck dry and left it as drained and clean, it would suffice.
Clean, uh-oh, running out.
It's up to you.
Clean and well-drained. Okay.
I have one more small plug, because I just can't not. So, Mr. Lattish, you asked us to live by the UC Davis Minimum Standard, which we agreed to and are happy with. It's not a problem. I hadn't reason, I hadn't had a chance to, I didn't see the publication, well, let me rephrase. I didn't study the publication prior to your asking. I did after, so between then and now, I've seen some things. You asked several people during the last meeting if 40 horses, if 20 acres could sustain 40 horses, based on that publication. And people stood here and really couldn't answer. They weren't sure, like, how, and I think the problem is that there's actually two questions and two answers. So the actual, so the question, can my 20 acres sustain 40 horses? The answer's no. They, the 20 acres by itself cannot sustain 40 horses. However, according to the publication which we agree to live by, it's can it house 40 horses? And housing, because the Minimum Standard says by the maximum stall space or paddock space, confined space is the actual words, it would be 228 square feet, right, for that, for an 18-hand horse. We do not have that large of a horse. We have 14-hand horses, so our Minimum Standard would actually be less, but let's go with the maximum. You said that in our map, there are two and a half acres of fenced property, so you were saying it would actually be much less than 40 acres, which would be correct for the housing of the horse, but there's so much more to housing horses, such as the manure management, handling the composting, dealing with all of these different items. And if I were using the full 40 acres for the amount of compost required, just so you know, in one acre, there is 43,562 square feet. In two acres, there's 87,120 square feet. You said in that map it looked like two and a half, but let's just go with the minimum. So let's go.
Let's just guess it.
Yeah, no, I know, and I agree. I would say it's three, but let's just go with the minimum and say two. Okay, so two acres would be 87,000 square feet, okay? The Minimum Standard is 228 square feet per 18-hand horse. I actually require less than that, but it doesn't matter.
In a stall.
In a stall, yes. You could say that I provide 2,178 square feet per horse, or you could say that my property, as it stands right now, per that publication, can house 385 horses.
No, a stall.
Well, it doesn't say covered stall.
Yes, it does. It talks about the size of the stall. That's where the square footage came from. I read the publication.
Okay, well, I might have missed that it had to be covered, because I did not see, I looked for that, and I didn't see it.
It also said that additional space is required for turnout.
Yes, yes. And we do have that even after. Right, we have all that. So I was saying, I'm not asking to have 385 horses at all. Never would. Yeah, yeah, I could not, I could not. However, allowing the 2,178 square feet per horse for 40 horses, I think is asking a reasonable thing. I'm only asking to allow my 40 horses to be on the property at certain times, as I deem fit altogether. I'm not asking to have 40 horses continuously, and I'm not asking to have over 40. I just want my horses to be allowed to be on the property. So that's what I'm asking for. And one final, last-ditch mathematical Hail Mary, so, thank you.
Are we...
I have, I have a couple of questions about finding number four, and I will have some other suggestion, changes.
In the resolution?
Refinements in the resolution, yeah. But finding number four says, "With the approval," this is like the second sentence, "With the approval of the CUP, the project will be conditioned to restrict operations in order to reduce its impact. Conditions include," as it's written, it says restrictions on the number of vehicle trips, establishing designated parking area for clients to park. Now, I didn't find that in either the stated conditions, either of those, in the stated conditions for the resolution, or in any of the environmental documents that were attached.
Parking area is included in the site plan. It's just there's so much on the site plan, because they included the entire parcel to show, but it is just on the other side of the access road from the arena. There is the parking area there.
What, I guess, it's a little hard to read the fine print on this.
Yes, it is.
So the parking area is designated in the site plan?
Correct.
Correct.
Okay.
I think part of the confusion here is we keep saying it'll conform to the site plan, and then we say the site plan doesn't reflect all the conditions that, so that there could be requirements to make changes to it, and so it seems like we should just make a list of the conditions that need to be met as part of their final.
And that, that would take care of the parking plan, but I don't see where we have any restrictions on the number of vehicle trips.
The restriction is in the project description on the mitigated negative declaration.
So not more than a residence would generate?
Yes.
What, I'm sorry.
Based on the number of employees and volunteers that are allowed to be on-site. So it doesn't...
It didn't specifically deal with vehicle trips.
It doesn't specifically state the number of vehicle trips. Yes, it is, it is specifically restricted by the number of people that are allowed on-site. You're correct.
Yeah, but I mean, they could come by bus, or they can, and I'm not suggesting...
They do. They do. They come by the school bus. They, like, literally walk up my driveway, and I go, "How did you get here?"
Yeah, we can make that change and go number of employees and patrons.
I thought it said somewhere in there that it would, that it had been determined to not generate more vehicle trips than a residence would generate. Somewhere in that description.
Somewhere in the environmental document, just not here.
So whatever number that is determined to be...
Well, I think we're, it's almost like a, almost like a home occupation, where we're saying that with X amount of employees, and by conditioning the amount of employees, by conditioning the amount of visitors, that'll be under the 7.5, you know, single-family resident trips a day.
Exactly.
So...
At least that's what I thought I read.
No, we don't, we don't really have a condition about the number of vehicle trips.
No, we have a condition on who can be on the site, and so therefore, limiting vehicle trips.
So then perhaps that should not be, well, number of vehicle trips is mentioned in the evidence under finding four, and it's, it's in condition number two, it talks about Exhibit C with regard to number of vehicle trips, so...
Is that the MND? I think there must be a discussion in the MND about employees to trips.
I don't see any, you know, we say there is a condition involving vehicle trips, but there isn't a specific provision for that. So either we need to put something in, or take out the reference to the number of vehicle trips.
Be easy, just add a condition that says, you know, no more than 7.5 average daily trips a day.
Okay. Any problem with that?
I mean, I don't, except I think about, like, emergency situations with my horses, or you allow me to put all 40 there, then that's a lot easier to maintain. But there's a lot more than, there's not, sorry, there's, there's a lot more traffic than us, so we are the minor amount of traffic. There's, Vern Hall has traffic up and down all the time. Jason Freeman has traffic up and down, and he admits that he sells stuff out of his house.
Well, it's not good into that one.
So I'm just, I know, but I'm just saying, like, how do you figure which traffic is which? Like...
Well, I want, I want to be, make a clear point here, that there wasn't a traffic study required as part of the mitigated negative deck because of the constraint on employees and visitors to the site.
Yes, so we're already restrained.
If there's more visitors or employees on the site, that could trigger, from Public Works, the need for an actual traffic study to study the impacts of this project. We programmed the, the project description was programmed not to trigger that.
Right.
And so if we are talking about more trips or more visitors, then we would need to go back to CEQA, and we would need to do a redo, and we need to do, probably we'd need to coordinate with Public Works on a traffic study potentially.
Which we're not talking about doing more.
Equivalent to any rural residential parcel, the normal amount of traffic.
Right.
Correct.
So my understanding is of it, by the restrictions on the number of clients or...
Yes.
or big parties, et cetera, that naturally took care of the, of limiting the vehicle.
Correct, correct. That is the trip limit is who can be on the site.
Okay, but I would say we don't have stated a vehicle trip limit.
I, I think we could just stay to add a condition that states that as well, because that would jive with the project description.
Okay, so are you ready for some suggestions on the, on the resolution?
Well, let's, I, I think we are going to be ready for that, but I just want to make sure that all the commissioners feel like you're, you're ready to move on to that and, and kind of work our way through it.
Yeah, are, are we limiting to 30 horses? It says.
That's what we voted on last time.
And it's the, it's 30 total equines. So there's, that does not get into younger horses, older horses, horses that can be on the site or have, have just been birthed. It's a total of 30.
And, and you stated right in here that it was open to a future amendment if it turns out that there are no issues with the name.
Yeah, correct. We could always come back with amendment and, and talk about 10 more horses, 20, you know, we could talk about more horses. But it's important, it's important for, it, it is important for a code enforcement officer to walk, if they walk up on a code call, to be able to easily discern the amount of horses and, and don't want to get into a debate on the age of a horse or that type of thing. It's, it's really so that it's enforceable.
And again, it's complaint-driven.
And it's complaint-driven, yes.
So would we be, so are we not open to discussion at all on the number? Because even just doing 35, which is what I've got now, would help.
Well, I think we had that discussion.
I know, but I.
We had the discussion, and we did a poll of the commission at that time, and that was the number that everyone agreed, well, we might not have all agreed on, but.
Exactly. Hence why I'm bringing it up again. I'm sorry.
I, I think that that.
Oh, I'll bring it back.
What's being missed here is not whether we believe you have the ability to keep 40 horses healthy or 50 horses healthy, but that, is that imposing undue stress on the neighbors? And so.
I understand that, but, and I think one of the commissioners was really concerned that more horses brought more business. That's not true. It brings less stress to my horses. And it brings less traffic up and down the road, which is what I'm hearing you say, is the traffic up and down the road is really important, than having my 35 would be equally as important. So it's, it's just hard. I can, I can work on the traffic so that it, so like I can determine my days. You know, there's less traffic today, so I'll take care of transporting horses today and rotate them, that type of thing. But it would be much easier on my horses if they were under my care at my house. So that's all I'm saying, is if, if I could have them there, it would make it easier and make it less traffic, less imposing on the neighbors, not more. When you talk 30 horses, 35 isn't that big a deal.
Well, I think, given last time's hearing, when we went through all that, and all the neighbors were here to. Give their impressions and everything. We concluded, we, the majority concluded 30 horses, and I really think we're, we're settled on that. I, I understand your argument.
And I also want to be clear, it's, it's not only the, the cap of the 30, it's also the restrictions on the employees and the traffic.
Yeah.
And so if there's an increase in traffic, that would violate the conditions of the CUP.
And remembering that under our new zoning code, you would have been capped at 20.
Yes, I am aware, and I appreciate very much, yes.
Try to give you something.
Yes, I appreciate that very much.
Okay. Any other general things before we start to beat up the resolution?
Beat up the resolution?
Maybe we're not going to beat it up. All right. Would you like to start?
I'll start. So let's see. My goodness, there's a lot of whereas's. Let's just start on the second page. The second whereas clause on the second page. It seems to me this was another public hearing and that this.
It just needs to be updated with the dates to show that this was continued to March 27.
During notice, notice public hearings on March 13th and March 27th, 2025.
You're seeing repeating the second whereas below for the 27th.
Just adding March 27th.
In the, in the clause, so it would, so during the notice public hearing on March 13th, and then add, and March 27th, because there were two dates for the public hearing. This is a continued hearing.
Oh, it says we unanimously agreed to continue it, so then we just need to talk about March 27.
Seems odd to mention it before I'm saying that it was continued to the 27th. However you want to do it.
So maybe it needs to be whereas, having considered the additional materials provided, it probably needs, you know, 45th whereas.
Another whereas.
Another whereas.
Okay, that, that makes sense. We'll get through this. My next thing is on page three, under finding two. Anybody have anything before that? When I read the evidence paragraph, I read it as saying that this, that former section 17.06.0787 provided for up to 40 horses, and it doesn't. You see where I am? So I would suggest that we take that for up to 40 horses out and move it up to right after the CUP. So the applicant is requesting approval of a CUP for up to 40 horses. Are you with it?
Got it.
Then page four. Finding number three, I would put language, new language at the beginning of that, as conditioned by this resolution, comma.
At the very beginning or the second sentence?
The very beginning. So, so finding three would start as conditioned by this resolution, comma, the subject property is adequate.
Even though those are the current conditions, site conditions. You're saying not the conditions of the resolution.
Well, it's, you mentioned the proposed project. You're saying the subject property is adequate and land area to accommodate the proposed project. Proposed project was for 40 horses, et cetera. We've added conditions to what was proposed. I don't.
I'm not understanding what you're saying. Or wouldn't we say the approved project, or what, so that it's.
Yeah, yeah, if you want to just change that to the, the project as approved, instead of having that language that I was suggesting, the subject property is adequate and land area to accommodate the project as approved.
I'm sorry, you're talking about the finding or the evidence section?
I'm talking about the finding, right?
Ah, well, the finding is per code. We, we have that taken verbatim from the code, so we, I don't know about modifying, we don't usually modify any of the findings themselves, it's the evidence. I think that's why it's going to be used.
We're only talking about the general plan and community and special plans in that section.
Okay, I'm totally lost. You're talking about finding three.
I think what's happening is the, the commission is, is finding that the project as, as proposed was not adequate in land area for, but it is adequate in land area for 30 horses. So that's why I don't think we would be violating code by saying the project as approved, because they fixed it to be able to make the findings.
And I think what these, that these guys are saying is that the, the general plan is, there is no thing that limits the number of horses current, under the old zoning code. So that's why they're saying it was sufficient in size, but we're saying, but, but we don't really believe that it is sufficient in size. It's just there were no limitations on it under the old zoning code. So it doesn't seem like it's a problem, though, to say as, as conditioned the subject property.
Yeah, I, I think as long as county council's okay with that, we're, we're okay with that. Absolutely.
Thank you for clarifying us.
Okay, then in the evidence, again, this is just how I was reading it. There's a reference to the Calaveras County Animal Services, and it sound, the way the, this paragraph goes on, it sounds as if you're attributing more to what they said than what I actually said. Let me make a suggestion with that convoluted introduction. If we get down to, that's the Calaveras County Animal Services citing da-da-da, which it uses in an own evaluation of Ledkrue, they've stated that a 20-acre parcel can potentially sort of support up to 40 horses if all standards are met. I would put a semicolon there, because that's what animal services said. And then, then the word however, except replacing the word but. And then in finding four, the proposed land use, either as conditioned or as approved, is compatible with neighboring land use and zoning.
It's conditioned and approved.
And?
I think it's as conditioned and approved, Anna.
Then in the evidence for finding four, I'll just ask the other commissioners. It says the, well, down about five lines says the project will be conditioned. I would say the project is conditioned, no big thing. But then it says conditions include, now do we want? I was thinking, oh, well, we don't have the restriction to the number of horses here, but then again, it's very clear in the conditions that we have that restriction. So I don't know that it's a need to list every condition there. So we're going to have something in there about the, the vehicle trips now, I mean the.
Yeah, there'll, there'll be a, a general condition.
A general condition, okay.
The, the project shall not exceed 7.5 average daily trips per residence.
What about the, the parking area? What's, how are we going to do with that?
I would like to keep it on the site plan for, for enforcement purposes and.
Are they going to be able to read it better than I am?
We should have just a written condition that says exactly what it says in the evidence. Because that site plan is very difficult to read. And when I blew it up, it wasn't at high enough resolution to be readable.
So just add, add this condition to the stated conditions, right?
Okay.
Yes. I, I do think it's awkward. It says although the applicant is requesting to board up to 40 horses.
Oh, I was going to take that out.
Yeah, okay.
I think that's kind of left over from the last time.
Yeah, yeah, you're not asking to board that many anyway, so.
Just take out, that, that language isn't necessary.
You got it.
Okay.
So you're just taking out the, the whole, that whole little phrase out?
Although the applicant is requesting to board up to 40 horses, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, next one's easy. Condition two dash two, near the bottom of page five. The one, two, three, fourth line down starts a declaration attached, should, should be, have an ED at the end of attached. And I would take out, since we're going to put a condition in the stated conditions having to do with vehicle trips, I would take out number of vehicle trips from that sentence, because exhibit C does not limit. Say two. I just, before we wrap this all, I, I commend you for your, the service you're providing to the community and the care you provide to your horses. And I, I know you're thinking we're putting some pretty heavy restrictions on you, but I really, I, I, I know you are trying to do the right thing, and I hope this all works out.
As I know you want.
I'm wondering about the two reference documents, the water quality and manure management documents. Is there, I know we don't want to say they shall comply with every aspect of those, but it seems like there should, should be some way for us to acknowledge them as references.
They're, they're acknowledged as references within the final waste management plan, but there are, most things in those documents would not be relevant to this project or environmental management would not want to be responsible for.
No, I understand, but you, but you're saying that it will remain in, in that management plan, the manure management plan, those references will remain.
Correct.
Okay.
Yes, yes. And they could be used later for, if, if, if the applicant comes back for revision to the CUP, we would still have that reference material to, to go by.
Okay. Anybody else? Are we ready for a recommendation? Let's hear that recommendation.
Okay, staff recommends the planning commission approved, planning commission resolution 2025-004 as amended, adopting the mitigated negative declaration and the mitigation monitoring and reporting program, and approving conditional use permit 2024-013 to allow a private equestrian facility for up to 30 horses on a rural residential parcel located at 2911 Patriot Way in Burson, based upon the findings contained therein.
I make a motion that we adopt.
Was the word as men, as amended in there?
Yes.
I was just going to say.
That we adopt the resolution with the changes that we mentioned.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None. Passes 401.
This, this decision is final unless appealed to the Board of Supervisors within 15 calendar days.
Just a couple more weeks.
Thank you.
Yeah, take a deep breath. Are there any informational items? It says none, but anything pop up for, you want to share?
Uh, no, no informational items.
What about the, the first, the second week in April? We are now having a, we've continued.
Yeah, so April 10th. Yeah, so April 10th, there will be a meeting, yes.
Is, is there anything, do you know of anything else on the agenda?
Um, I'm not aware of anything else. There is, I'm trying to think of that. Is there, yeah, not, not aware of anything else at this time.
Okay.
And have we spoken to our other commissioner to make sure that he will be available on that date?
I, I, I have not, but I know he's going to be back in town. I'm speaking with him on, I believe, Tuesday of this week, so I will, I will remind him.
Wonderful.
He needs to be here.
Needs to be here. Okay, any commissioner reports?
No.
Me either. Planning director reports?
Uh, no, just what I said before about the ag advisory committee, so stay tuned for that. There'll be some additional input coming your way.
Is that, that won't be attached to a particular project? It's just information coming in?
Yeah, they, they provide input, so projects that are on or adjacent to resource production lands will go to them first at a meeting, they'll provide input, and then that input will find its way, you know, more than likely to you and or the, both the board.
Just like being routed to any other.
Right, it's like being, it will be getting additional comments like from another county department, but it's from the agricultural advisory committee.
Okay. On that happy note, we are adjourned at about 11 after 11.